It's starting and we're live now.
Thank you everyone. Long, long trip once again.
Sorry? Oh no, I'm good thanks sir.
Yes, thank you everyone, be careful. We're now in Australia, Brisbane to be specific and yeah, take it back my people here, full house. Nice, thank you so much everyone, thank you all, my friends and wherever it might be. It's about what time now, 7:00 or whatever? Yeah. It's the end of the world man. Careful, be careful right? I don't know yet, but just hope that they're fine. They've seen through that, they have the trail of traffic and they're very smart. Now this fake videos they have.
Can I finish it?
Maybe take things off.
Take it back, wow, I see all our ugly people here. Thank you everyone, so in Brisbane, if you're in Brisbane, we have a town hall meeting today, this evening, right? This afternoon.
What time is it? 5:30.
5:30pm, so those of you who have been doubting that I can come here, I'm here on the ground now, so let me show them myself. Even though I look a little tired. Fine pretty much for three days. Wow, yes, I left Lagos on Monday night, I had this Tuesday in Nigeria. Wednesday morning in Brisbane, in Australia, so it's good to see you guys at the event. It's been home to a town hall meeting today. Yeah, Springwood Hotel is where it is.
Springwood Hotel?
Yeah, Springwood Hotel in Brisbane as well. And that's my town hall meeting at 5:30. A lot of people already joined us, thank you. It's a lovely family here, before us here. And this is a lovely city of Brisbane. I know how you guys feel, you look at the roads and like crossing out our leaders. These are the easiest things to do. I was reading somewhere today, there's an infographic on the current president of India, the prime minister of India. What he has done in four years. There used to be some villages without electricity, there is no villages, no villages left without electricity.
In India?
Four years is enough to do a lot of things, so somebody said that the audio is very low. Sorry, sorry, sorry people, we're... No, I think it's my audio, uh... Can you hear me? So this is Brisbane North, where we are at now, yes, so where are we going to South?
We are going to the south.
Yeah, so the event will happen, somebody's asking already, say is this Brisbane North or South?
Right, South, the event is happening in South, Springwood Hotel, Springwood in the south.
In the south, so yeah, so the event is happening in the south, but it is not right now.
Driving towards the south.
We are driving towards the south in Brisbane. I'd like to make it, have you know, maybe you guys have traveled with us and you can see how people get things done elsewhere. When we are in Nigeria it's chaos, terrible roads, traffic, lights don't work, when they are working, nobody respects them. It's the control of all these things and this mode, but it's possible to change all of that. So volume is better, okay, I'm on a radio, maybe you see, there's a regular people out there who are always looking out for us. Yeah, the positions are still in your future, these are simple things that we find here, nice roads, like you know, things are walking. Electricity, everything you take for granted in Nigeria is... The things we take seriously in Nigeria, they take for granted over here.
They're thinking about power, they're thinking about...
This guy don't think about electricity anymore.
They're thinking about making life better, the next level.
Yes, maybe they have made Wi-Fi a tool for them to run around with, yeah. And we're still like... We're still struggling with how to get Nepa to just give us life for four hours per day, doesn't happen. And the people who made it impossible for us to get Nepa, we are, some young people are dying to bring them back to power. Or to retain them in power, you know, it's very sad, but we'll keep letting you see how this is working on our path to the world. You know, how it is easy for people to live a good life and how it is possible for you to live a better life than you have now. Within four years, I do get a lot of things that are accomplished in Nigeria. You can retire all the cabals. See someone say it's a revolution, a revolutionary, that that's equal to taught, you know. So Bahari second, we're going to win, we're gonna win. Sorry. Back, yes, yes, we'll take it back, we have to take it back, yes. All our people here would love to come home. Love that guy, back, he is full of life, he's a great supporter, yeah. You don't go to school today, what happened, why you don't go to school today? Stupid supporter. He just said, you know, you are skipping class for us this one day, don't let your principal find out. Look at the train. This is like what's... Yes, we're live, we're live now, say hello to all of our people, all of our place, they're watching us live, driving through the city of Brisbane, yes. Yes. Yes, thank you so much for bringing us and we're having a good time already so far, so well, in Brisbane.
Yes, they are very good help, yes, thank God for coming around, and Ophelia will take care of A A C and P T O very well.
Yes.
And they have our colleagues behind them.
Thank you so much, see you soon. Take it back, yes. Ah, John, yes, thank you so much. Thank you, see you soon. I think I'll just call my boss, I'll just... That's your boss, no, but maybe your boss is watching this. I told him I'm coming late, but I just, I'll call him, I just said that, it's no point. Your boss should go to Nigeria one day to just let us work towards our independence, true independence.
Yeah, call my phone so that you can speak to all of us.
I'll just drop callings in school. Okay. It's good, you know. I wish...
We will have opportunities, because it's getting more and more...
Oh fantastic, yeah, okay. And we can stream it live as well, yeah.
Hello?
Morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to Australia, Mr. Soworé.
Well, thank you so much, thank you for bringing us, we're here in Brisbane and just driving through your township, I mean your city here, beautiful city. Thank you, thank you so much for bringing us.
We are so delighted to have you, we've been waiting for you.
I'm excited also to be here and I can't wait to see everyone, can't wait to be in all of the cities here. We're doing four cities, this is a four-city tour. We're doing Brisbane and then from here we go to, I think...
South.
South, yeah, and then ultimately we'll be in Perth before we leave next week. Thank you so much for bringing us.
Oh, thank you so much for taking your time, because you are making history, because you are the first in the history of Nigeria to really talking to Nigeria. Traveling across the stage.
Probably the first presidential candidate to visit Australia.
Yes. I think you are the first presidential candidate to...
To visit Australia, yes.
Yes, Australia, that's history.
I've not heard anybody do that before, you know, yes. So we are, we are calling school now, this one looks better than our university. Better than the university of Lagos, we are, you call it, have a nice day man. Take it back. So we just drop calls, calling at school, you know.
Yeah, but, but it's a long day and a little bit of jet lag, quite time to rest.
Yeah, I'm going to the hotel to rest now and then later on in the evening we'll be at the town hall meeting in Brisbane. So if you're in Brisbane and you're watching, oh, you're in Brisbane, yes, I'm calling on order as well in Brisbane too. Please join us tonight at 5:30pm, south, southern part of Brisbane, for our town hall meeting, yes.
Yes, please, rest well, because it's gonna be a long evening.
Don't worry, you know, we are, we are built for this, don't worry.
You are a very strong man. I, 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 the project, it may be a long project, I'm happy that you are unlocking the mind of the average Nigerian youth. I like the project.
It is happening.
You are touching their mentality, the way they see their future.
And they are fighting right now, they are fighting very hard on social media to tell the story and to change the narrative. I'm really happy and pleased about that, a lot of young people are questioning why they should continue to vote for the people that have failed them for 58 years. It's never happened before, then they are discussing alternative, we have a, we have a hashtag that says we have better alternatives. Than the two old, corrupt, tired and sick leaders that are trying to return back to power. You know, when you ask them what they are bringing, they have nothing to tell you, other than to claim that it is in the time of their zone and it's the time of the ethnic group, you know. As if, as if they have helped even their own ethnic people.
Yes, and one thing, one thing about the quest of God that we expect from your government is to bring history back to Nigeria. One thing about the Nigerian...
Corollum, yes.
If you know about history, you don't know if vote for a few people in power today, because they don't know anything about it. You could read it on a piece on newspaper, but it doesn't tell you the detail of people who like to show you something. They are still powerful, so bringing history back to Nigeria, honestly, it's gonna be a tough agenda, so that from primary school to university, history is compulsory. People need to learn about their history, their past, their present and their future, because a man that doesn't know history, has no future. So we have to bring history back.
Wow, that's, that's so deep, yes, we are bringing back history and what we are doing now is also history. As they say, journalism or social media is capturing history in a hurry. This is also going to be part of history and nobody will forget this time in the history of Nigeria where people of Nigeria rose up all over the world to say that enough is enough. And they want to change the course of history. And they have no option, they have to give way, you know, whether they like it or not, we are taking it back and there's no looking back.
Yes, but my question is, there's something I was really keen to talk to you about, it's about the dispowerment thing. It's really powerful, because at the end of the day, the war is gonna be the war between money and the power of information.
Of information and ideas as well, yes, yes, yes.
For the youth, honestly, the mind of the youth is getting unlocked now, but I suggest that in every local government, there is this military race, military army going on. And it will be life, people will be talking about the idea of this high-tech, which is your, your program, the agenda in government. So there would be a hot debate among the youth and at least once a month, we have two months for the election now. Or at least two times in a month, there is debate in every town hall meeting, every local government, that will be chaired by the head of that person.
Yes.
In that local government, so there would be, it will be life, if it's already going on, it's more popular, because we have seen that. Not only you are in every village or any local town, we don't see this, but you can't be everywhere. So this time, because actually there's gonna be a war within power of information and money, so you, we don't have the money, but we have the power of information.
That's right, and power of ideas, yeah, yeah.
We're gonna try to invite every person from every world supply, from carpenter to professor, to our community, in every local government, where there will be a debate on security, on economy, on social welfare, on everything.
Education, health, yes.
And the debate will be open for everybody and if a wrong with, from the local language, can use their local language to run it, whatever they have to do. At least, the people are following, people can copy books, mechanic can copy book, carpenter can copy book, a technician can copy book. So that has to be going on, because what the Nigerian really needs is to unlock their mind, for them to understand that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Exactly, so it is, it's about someone who has a philosophy, look, this is my future, I have to vote and wait until the vote is counted. I have to ensure that my vote is counted, so it's not about enlightenment, it's not about knowing your future, that this coincides my life. This coincides with what is happening, so that is the issue with the average Nigerian youth, they don't really know. Some are educated, but they're not enlightened enough to know.
Wow, that's a tear.
What you are doing is unlocking their mind.
Yes.
Okay, so that has to be bad, they will find town hall meeting at least two times every month, that should be going on across every local government in Nigeria.
Yes.
That is it, I mean that is going on, I tell you the truth, you are going to capture the most mind of the youth and they are not to really know. They are sometimes would think, oh, we know, we know what to vote, we know, but they don't really know, they are not enlightened enough to know that that is your future, this is your life. And also this, this whole western nation is built on enlightenment, they can understand that. If you talk to an electrician in Australia, you will not know the difference between electrician and electrical engineer, not different. They have information, they have knowledge, there is a big difference between electrician and electrical engineer.
No, no, you heard that the minister of health said that his tailor is a doctor, so they have turned all the professionals into, you know, into carpenters and, you know, they've destroyed the country. They've destroyed everything this guy's touched, they destroyed. And it's very important what you're saying, that when people are sufficiently educated and knowledgeable about what they are doing, there's will be little gap between, you know, people who are skilled professionals or academic professionals. You know, at the end of the day, it is a professor in the US that teaches somebody how to be a carpenter.
True.
You know, because it is the reason why I disagree with our friend when he said he wants to create skill acquisition center, what is the meaning of skill acquisition centers? We need to have community colleges in places where we don't have universities, where people within two years can pick up an, you know, an associate degree in accounting, even in legal services. Or any other profession, even carpentry, barbing, all those things that in the US you cannot cut somebody's hair without a license. And I'm sure it's the same thing here, but in Nigeria, you can just wake up one day and go and sew gown to be a lawyer and go to court and the magistrate will not even ask you where you went to law school. There are a lot of them like that, this is the reason why the country, this is the same problem we are having, we have a lot of very uneducated people who are barely literate, who claim to be experts and professional. I meet them all the time on TV and when you challenge them, they get upset, because they can't defend their oppositions.
Yes, 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 so on another note, prison supposed to be a correction center, but the Nigerian prison is a destruction center. So there would be a solid skill acquisition center in the prison, live or in written, not the one on paper.
I mean, in the US you can obtain a degree from prison.
People have done that here many times before.
It's not, it's not, it's not that, it's not only should be, it's not going to be skill acquisition center alone. People who want to continue their life in a way that is progressive, in a way that when they return back to society, they can be completely reformed and they can assist society, will be given the option to do that. But with the corruption as I've been found, what is terrible about prison system is that most of the people in prison are people who are waiting trial, people are not supposed to be in prison. Whereas people who are supposed to be in prison are the ones governing the country, you know, criminals, yeah, it's insane, it's insane. But thank you so much for this enlightenment, I think when I, when I, when I activate my phone, we'll make it public, so that people can be calling us whilst we are driving. We can be having this robust engagement from all over the world, yes. I really like it, I can connect to the speaker of the car. People can hear you loud and clear.
Okay, yeah, thank you for calling me, we're so sorry that it's a long turnout, are you welcome, are you welcome today?
No, no, that's, that's fine, as long as I can find Nigerian food, I can sleep a little bit, I have no problem.
Okay, thanks Chris.
Yes, thank you Chris. Yeah, yeah. I'll rest, I'll rest.
You're alright, thank you. I told you Dusy that he would prefer Nigerian food.
I'm Nigerian by heart. Everything about me is Nigerian man, I could, I can do without anything, but I can't do without Nigerian food, whatever I find myself. If they go and look at my Google searches, anywhere I travel to, the first thing I search for is Nigerian restaurants.
It's the same, I think when we go here too, when you travel back from Nigeria, you want to eat either swallow, either a cow or something.
Yes, yes, swallow something, I know. Sometimes I don't even like swallow, I just want to drink soup, you know, gusse or, yeah. Because nobody in the world cooks the way we cook.
No, no, and that's why I told my wife, this minister for, what is it, when they asking him, who is the best, who makes the best jollof rice?
Or misinformation, yeah, lie Mohammed.
Yeah, what are you saying?
They don't know any better.
You say Senegalese make better jollof rice.
They don't know any better, they demarcate the country by their share, by their ignorance, sometimes that's all they know, they don't know any better, you know. What Bahari says is what he knows. I heard the other day he told that Nigerians who are tired of Nigeria should move to, they are free to live.
That was boring.
Yeah, is that, how does that, you know, how do you say that, president of a country telling their citizen they are free to live? You know, live to where?
To where, where are they gonna go to?
Where to go to, you know. Where you should be creating a condition for people to return home, to bring back the skills and investment that they want to bring.
I think he's lost it.
No, the man is, the man is out of, is out of his senses.
The other day I watched, my son and my wife watched a clip, and in the interview I was asking him a question.
And he went in a different direction, his answer was different from the question.
And then the interviewer was even trying to explain to him the meaning of the English, because I don't think he understood the English drama, so the guy was whispering in his ear, and then he said, oh, and he didn't even answer the question, he...
He does that, that's why they shield him from debates and...
He will fail miserably.
Miserably, you know, everything that is not written down and practiced over time, they can't answer. And most of the things they are saying are the same thing ever since, since 1982.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know how.
Someone is saying that the man is senile and has dementia, I don't, I have no doubt that he does, I have no doubt. So we're in a tunnel, look at this tunnel here, it's amazing, how long is the tunnel?
I think this is roughly about five kilometers.
Five kilometers, wow, imagine a five kilometer tunnel in Lagos, they will run through the city.
And this one is under, it's under water.
At some stage you are gonna go underwater.
Yeah, I know, it's unbelievable.
I remember there's a depression and then we are going on that, the sea, on that riverbed.
Okay.
So there will be a depression.
You feel it?
Yeah, you see the depression, it's not quite, so where we're going to now, we are rightly on the bed of the water.
Wow.
At that point where there's a depression.
I hope you guys can see, this is a tunnel, you know, uh... Yeah. This is a tunnel and you just need two of these and Lagos traffic will be resolved by, you know, maybe some 20% right away there. And then you add that to train.
Train services.
Train services, you need to have a train come from Badagri to Ajotag or even beyond there. And then you have another one going from Lagos Island to Otak, resolve issue, that our train is worst, they have...
Christmas is slightly bigger than Nigeria, the whole state.
The whole state of Christmas, it's bigger than Nigeria.
Yeah, slightly bigger.
That's what I told them.
If you see these infrastructures.
Yeah, it is in the state itself, yeah.
I just said to my, all we need to do is replicate, not replicate, even, let's even copy, let's even copy what they are doing.
Just come and copy it.
That's all.
And I'm sure you can find it on Google.
Oh yeah, you can.
You can find a plan of...
Hit the thumbs up in the chat for Soreh.
Yeah, thank you man, Gary, great supporter here, man, this guy is... The only advantage in flying is money, leverage, you will not feel it too much, you know, it's...
It's black in the air, yeah.
They serve you every day, they ask you what you want, how you feeling, and it seems like you delivered a flight to ensure that you had the most convenient flights. It's amazing, yeah, everything, yeah. Yeah, which is the only solid airline. People's comrades watching, pizza, a lot, we see a lot, when he last flown on, man, he said, he said he loves that key, like, back. Mike Ellison's man.
Enough is enough, take it back.
Yes, Mike Ellison, take it back, man, people love you. Give me a shout out, yes. So yeah.
I can't imagine, honestly, there was a day when I went to Nigeria, from Second Gates in First Tag to Fourth Gate, it's a stretch of maybe five kilometer. I spent four hours in it, I had to come down from the car and take Okada.
Yeah.
I let the driver to drive, come down from the car, took Okada to the bus stop and then took bus, I got to where I was going, the driver was still in the traffic. I was going to, towards the airport.
Wow, yeah, the other day I had to take, I had to take, to come to Australia, I had to get out of the car and jump to like an Okada to get to the airport.
Want me to drive here, right?
That's...
Want me to drive in?
Yeah, you can drive, you can drive.
That's your word?
Yes.
Wow, this hospital?
Yes.
Look at the hospital, my goodness.
They're already. When my wife said you made it to the airport, I was like, I don't think, how did you do it?
It was last minute. We were the last person to get on the aircraft, last person to get a ticket, last person to get on the aircraft. Yeah, and they, they had told us that they're closing, but one guy just kept his computer open for us.
She, that was uh.
That was something else.
That's something else.
Yeah, something else. Wow, we're at Saint's.
The P K A, Princess Alexandra.
Princess Alexandra.
Hospital.
Hospital in uh.
Bolonggaba, yeah.
Bolonggaba in Brisbane. So, you know, in fact, if you get here before you see a doctor, you will be alright. Because the hospital environment alone is enough to make you start feeling well.
You want to calm down?
Yeah. We're just showing them, we're just showing around and this hospital here, mental health services. Like, you know, in case of people who have mental health issues, something that we kind of scandalize in Nigeria. Here, they take it serious. Because a lot of people have mental health issues and in Nigeria, we just go and look for chain to chain them down. Instead of taking care of them and making sure that.
Yeah, they have more.
Yeah.
You have more power here. My wife would tell you.
Power. We did that one outside.
Yeah, yeah. Somebody's saying make me look hospital. Yeah, man, it's, it's, it's hospital. It's, there's.
Tomorrow, yeah, you can be private tomorrow.
Yeah.
I was meant to collect um, the pass from work, um, we can use for, they have this, they have for tourist city, tourist city cycle.
Oh, yeah?
Uh, so you just like electric bicycle, you just drive.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. I'm gonna try to run as well tomorrow morning.
Okay. Yeah, in our, it's, oh, where we leave, or close where you'll be staying, yeah, there'll be like a running.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
It will be better in the city.
I just like running to the city, as long as they have like walkways.
They have walkway, yeah.
Because I already can tell that it's a, it's a very nice place to run. Just some three miles before I go to bed and wake up in the three miles.
Exercise is actually good.
It is.
For productive mind.
Yeah, yeah. It's uh, it helps me a lot.
Can I help you with it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine. Uh, we have to keep our people up to date with how the rest of the world is moving forward as we are moving backwards.
And like I keep saying, all we need to do in this day and age is just to copy. You don't really need to.
Most of the things we need to copy, we don't even have to leave our houses before we copy them, you know. I'm sure the plan for this city is on the internet.
It's on the internet. If you Google the plan for this hospital, it's probably on, on the internet.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, yesterday when I was at uh, when we were in Dubai and I was looking at the airport. I'm, I'm sure the plan is somewhere you can obtain it.
Yeah.
Even if we can't build an airport as big as that, at least you can fix the one you have.
The one you have.
Yeah.
Moetala Mohammed Airport, I don't know if the AC is still working.
Nothing is working, yeah. Nothing is, it's very depressing.
Ordinary toilet. I don't know whether it takes rocket science for a toilet to be seen to be dirty and cleaned.
Somebody is saying that uh, it seems like Buhari people and Attiku people have left Twitter, uh, it's Facebook for us.
Hmm.
So we should go to Twitter. So everybody go and create a Twitter account and fight the battle of ideas on Twitter as well. I urge you all, create your own Twitter account, uh, and you can uh, you can, let me, you can follow me. My Twitter account is Yaeli Shorre, and uh, Twitter account for the campaign is Shorre twenty nineteen. I think I was doing a great job also on Instagram, and I want to shout out to Tunde Nod, uh, it's one of the celebrities on Instagram who has been very supportive.
Yeah.
A lot of these celebrities, they are still supporting the old system because of what they benefit from them.
True.
But they should know that if the country is better, if it's great, you will even be a better celebrity. But if you have no country, a celebrity can easily become a refugee in another country, when the country goes down finally.
Or when the president is urging the citizens.
To leave, yes.
If you don't like the country.
Yeah.
I don't know any president that will do that to citizens. He's lost it.
Yes, if you are not on Twitter, create a Twitter handle. It takes less than five minutes to do that. Uh, and go fight these guys. We need new social media influencers on Twitter to start the battle of ideas. There's no big deal about those guys on Twitter who are sponsored and paid by Attiku and Buhari to be telling lies about articulation. There's nothing articulated. We need to deactivate all the articulated lies on Twitter. On Facebook, I think they've seen that we're too good for them on Facebook. They let Facebook for us, but we need to go to Twitter as well. You know, occupy all the occupiables. There's nothing to hold off again, you know. We must take it back without looking back. Right, we're still in the city of Brisbane, Australia. Uh, it's Wednesday here about uh, eight uh, eight uh, eight oh eight uh, AM. And I'm here with Michael. Michael is uh, right. Yes, you know, it's uh, uh, so Mike is born and that, he's back, so. We're uh, we're driving around from uh, Brisbane Hospital, which is not about Brisbane, and it's a lot of sound of about to understand. And it'll be a tough opening tonight, uh, I mean, this afternoon, five thirty PM, it's going to be hotel, uh, in uh, Brisbane. I want you guys to all show up there, those who are, they won't be, you know, tough, but. I'm sending some love to the freedom of Nigeria, uh, the contribution of all our complete support. And uh, so that Nigeria starts to look like it started from next year, not the way it is now. Don't vote for any analog brain leader who has been around for how many years, three years. There's no need for the country of Nigeria to be governed by people who are who are doing Nigeria itself. They need to retire currently, uh, and definitely discover, doesn't matter whether it's Attiku or Buhari or any of those old cats. They are all the same. There's no difference between ABC or ABC. There's no difference between Attiku or Buhari. All of them are the same. They work for the, they do the same things, they're doing the same things, have the same ideas, yeah, share the same ideologies. And those are the kind of ideologies that are targeting, developing a better country and most tired. So, thank you so much, and uh, as we always do, taking you to the city of Brisbane. So that it can expire and not maintain, uh, to your country too. And in a few years. Right leaders to govern the country. People have exposure, uh, people who have integrity, people who've got capacity. And most importantly, people who are patriotic. Somebody said Buhari is watching, I'm sure. Says that president tried to visit villages in Nigeria. Of course, I just came from several villages if I came to Australia. We are everywhere, so you know that, just keep following us, and when we are not in Nigeria, our friends and colleagues are visiting villages. We have some very tense news today. Some of uh, taking backers, I mean, A C members in Delta had an accident. And um, hoping that uh, they are all fine, but if that one of their cars plunged into a river in Agbaro. And three of them are still missing as we speak. We hope two of them have been found, two, three others are missing. We just hope they're okay. It's uh, very sad. It's, it's a sad thing and uh, uh, if you're out there, you know, campaigning or driving around in Nigeria, just be careful, check your tires, don't travel when it's too late. And make sure that uh, your driver is uh, you know, you know, has got a driver's license and is in his right senses when driving. Alright? Yeah, it's very sad. It's very sad. So. The hazards of Nigerian roads. Yeah, the hazard of Nigerian roads. If our roads are like this, maybe it will reduce those kind of accidents to the barest minimum. Barest minimum, yeah. This is, this is, this is a tipper here to alert. This, if it's Nigeria, a tipper would, stones will be falling from the tipper, you know. We shouldn't have the kind of country we have now in this age and time. I mean, this is, you know, year two thousand and eighteen and we're still like living as if we're in a stone age. It's very sad. Yeah, they said when are we coming to Sydney? We're coming to Sydney. Uh, those who are in Sydney, Saturday we'll be in Sydney, Saturday in Sydney.
Yeah, Saturday morning.
Okay, Saturday morning we'll be in Sydney, so start getting ready for us in Sydney. Yeah, those of you have been asking for our running mate who have uh, announced a running mate, yes, Doctor Rafi.
Wow, that's.
Doctor Rafi.
Good running mate.
Yes, and he's a public health professional.
I was so happy to see.
You need to hear this guy speaking, you know. We have asked him to actually reach out to our followers on uh, on Facebook or, you know, issuing uh, a video. He's probably working on it.
Yeah.
Very sound guy, you know.
His profile is bad.
Yeah, it's amazing, amazing. Uh, and this is to tell you that there are good Nigerians out there.
Yes, there are.
This guy is forty-two years old, uh, or there about. So the age of the presidential candidate and the vice.
Put together.
Combine together is less than those of the two other candidates from PDP and APC. Yeah, they, they commit. So Doctor Rafi is a.
Is he?
Is a running mate, yes. So, he's on Twitter, I mean, he's on Facebook as well, I'm sure. I saw his Facebook page. And people are already correlating him. Well, it's uh, you know, in fact, since uh, the week started, it's been the biggest news. And nobody who read the news wasn't happy about it. That was interesting.
It was a very pleasant surprise.
Yes. So it tells you that uh, we are assembling some of uh, the best brains in the country, the run Nigeria, starting from next year. Some of the best, best brains, eh? Digital brains, not analog brains. Because when we did our research, uh, when we started this whole campaign eight months ago, asking Nigerians what they want the most in terms of what they want from them, man. It's, it's health. Health is not their number one priority.
And you know why? Because if you have your health, you can have the world.
Yes, you can have, with health, yeah. So, so it makes sense that uh, our VP pick is a, a public health professional.
Yeah, yeah.
Hello, Mr. Flex.
And he's worked in one of the most difficult hospitals in the north.
Driving, that's why.
Really, okay.
Yeah, Viro.
Interesting, exactly.
Odion is driving, that's why I pick up his phone. Yeah, this is why we are with Shorre now. Yeah. You want to.
So while out here, I'm going to obtain a new telephone number and I'll let you have it uh, as soon as it's activated. It's here. Amazing, amazing. Amazing. That's uh, that's uh, that's gonna be my, we get my. So you can be calling while we're driving and they talk to us. We've been driving close to an hour now. No traffic, no police checkpoint.
The person you are calling is not available. Please leave a short message.
That's Nigeria for you. If you're traveling on Lagos, beneath Expressway, ah, the checkpoints are, I don't know, maybe almost every five kilometers.
So is that city for a UK? Uh, no.
No.
We are in Australia, Australia.
Brisbane.
We're in Brisbane, Australia. For those who want to find out about trivia, Australia is the smallest pa- uh, continent in the world, I think. Uh, but one state here, Queensland, is bigger than Nigeria.
Bigger than Nigeria, correct.
Yeah, yeah. So, and you can imagine, it's bigger than Nigeria, it's got like great infrastructure. This, I think there's another airport here.
Yes, there's a mini airport here.
At your field, that's where, yeah. I mean, sorry, airport here.
Oh, we're thinking if you go, you want to go on a chopper?
Oh, why not? We can do that. Is that tomorrow or today?
It'll be tomorrow.
Okay. Yeah, we can do it. Oh, I would love that. So I can uh, will you let me livestream from the air?
I think they will.
Yeah, yeah, I would do that. I would gladly take the chopper around the city of Brisbane. No, tired, yeah, me, I do this all the time. Like I said, we are beautiful days.
Yeah, you can do it here, posting in the morning. I'll sort all that out when I can.
Okay.
Michael, just check your, my phone for your school number. I need to call Mrs., what's her name now? Lady in the front desk.
So they'll tell him he's not coming, right?
As they will be calling me soon.
Before police come and get you.
They'll be calling me soon. We can't find your son in school.
Yeah, that's the way it should be. It's one of the things that I said. The moment we're able to take all the kids out of the streets by putting them in school, it will become a criminal offense for parents to ask the student to halt.
To help, yeah, true.
Yeah. So if we don't see your child in school.
We'll ring the parents.
We'll ring the parents. If we, if we don't, if we can't find you, the police will come and get you for not sending your child to school. But I don't send my daughter and son to school.
Police do it, yeah.
They'll come to the house. They'll come look for you. It's like, sir, can we find out why your kids haven't been to school in two days? In fact, the first day they will start calling you, they don't, you know, investing in the future of these kids, you can't afford to keep them in the house seven.
Michael had some sport competition yesterday.
Wow. Wow. Wow, the whole of Queensland, Michael, hundred meters.
Are we in the same boat, the same boat?
Yeah, on Nigeria. Yeah, I'm gonna be running for Nigeria. You'll be fine.
You'll be fine.
You'll be healing and then you'll be back. Wow, maybe if he didn't hurt his leg for the first time, he would have won the second one too. Don't worry, Michael, you're gonna win.
When show is there, you win.
Win. A lot of people are gonna be winning competitions all over the world, but we had the uh, a person in South Africa too. Who, lady who brought us South Africa, though, is uh, Karen, yeah, so, yes. Her daughter is one of the best runners in South Africa, you know, and she's on the verge of saying, look, I cannot. She doesn't want to go to Africa anymore. So we are living with that. Please, just hang on to two thousand and eight. You have a conversation. Right, yes. So.
This place we are going to, we just moved in there. Oh, there's one lady who has been really mean to see you.
Yeah, wow. So we'll see her today, possibly if she's still on.
Sandra.
Oh, okay.
Since I'm watching you guys via Facebook Live.
Wow.
Special greeting to Shorre.
Thank you, Sandra. Thank you so much. I will see you soon.
It's about the entrance of the airport.
Okay, wow.
Quite a lot of different company owns the airlines.
Okay, then, so they come on.
Come on. You see, the planes will be packed here, small planes here.
That's great, yeah.
The Americans use here as well, they, they had their fighter jet.
Wow, yeah.
Land here and take off.
Wow. Yeah, it's uh, it's about eleven uh, it's about eleven twenty-five now in Nigeria.
P M.
Almost, yeah, almost midnight, yeah.
Three hours close this.
Okay.
Yeah. Almost eleven thirty.
P M.
In Nigeria, yeah.
On Tuesday night.
Um, Tuesday night, yeah.
Yes.
Generally, when we wake up in the morning here, they are back going to bed there. And when we are running up our day, they are waking up.
Yes. In the U S, I mean, I think we're like.
U S.
U S now, this is like seven, something like, yeah.
P M.
Yeah.
P M.
Yeah.
Cause I tried-
No, U S is, no, no, U S is about afternoon, yeah, it's alright.
Cause I tried calling Malcolm yesterday, I checked the time, it was about.
Yeah, U S is uh, P A, it's in the afternoon now. It's probably like five P M.
P M.
In the U S.
How is Malcolm? Is this in the U S or?
It's in the U S, yes, Malcolm, I did, it's in the U S. He just came back from Nigeria after the convention we had, right now.
A lot of people fall in love with him talking, when you got to have it.
The interview with uh, yeah. He's a brilliant guy, he uh, he went from University of Lagos as an undergraduate, after finishing his undergraduate degree.
Yeah.
To do a P H D at Cambridge.
Wow.
Yes, and a chemical engineer, and finished in three years. Then went back after that, after he found, you know, then another, I think he did an M B A in another school.
Hmm.
Super, super brand, uh, that. And when you see those kind of young people, you know that uh, we have-
And the reason they're not even going back to Nigeria is because.
They can't, Nigeria cannot accommodate their level of uh, exposure and intellect.
Who's that?
Mega Comrade, yes. Mega Comrade, if you are watching, you are loved all over the world here.
Oh, he's a star.
Mega Comrade is a star, he's in, he's based in Dallas. It's probably, his time is uh, probably around three P M now, their time, yeah.
I have to really call him, I have to.
He's our star too, you know. Mega, it's mega. He says five twenty-seven P M in Canada. Okay, maybe we should do a little competition. Tell us what time it is wherever you are. Tell us what time it is wherever you-